Call the special board of aldermen meeting to order on Monday, November 26, 2018, at 7:00 PM here in the aldermenic chamber. The prayer will be offered by city clerk Patricia Piatzou, and alderman Mike O'Brien will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Gidge.
President.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
President.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Malyse Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
We have 13 members present.
Also in attendance this evening is Mayor Jim Donchess, and Alderman Schmidt was unable to be with us this evening. Tonight, we have a public hearing on Resolution 1892, and keeping with our tradition, I'm going to turn the hearing over to Alderman Dowd, chairman of the budget committee.
Okay, this evening, we're having a public hearing on a change to R 18092, which is amending R 18001, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $15,500,000 for the Performing Arts Center located at 201 Main Street. I am going to be calling for testimony in favor and testimony in opposition. So anyone that wants to give testimony in favor will come up to the microphone and give us your name and address and present your comments, and then I will ask for people in opposition, they can come up and give their comments. Once again, I will then ask for anyone that's speaking in favor, and once again, I will ask for anybody in opposition. After that, I will call the public hearing closed, and after a very short pause, we'll go into the budget meeting to consider this motion.
Mr. Chair, so I think the ordinance requires that we explain what we're proposing.
Yes, I was just going to get.
Okay.
But before we have comments in favor or opposition, we have to explain exactly what the ordinance is consisting of, and here this evening is Mayor Jim Donchess, and I think he wants to call up Mr. Cummings and Mr. Fredette, to come up to the, and sit up in the circle with us and tell us what this is all about.
All right, Mr. Chair, well, thank you very much. I think I would, I was going to take a minute to explain what we've accomplished to date and where we are, and then why it is we need the resolution that is proposed before you. First of all, the bond issue passed back in March of this year, so that was about eight months ago. For the first two, couple, the first couple of months, we were working on acquiring the building, and I, the building was acquired in either late April, early May, sometime, sometime around then. The next thing that occurred is that we formed a steering committee by, by resolution, and we appointed and confirmed members of the steering committee to help us oversee the project. And members of the steering committee include members of the Board of Aldermen, community members, downtown people, and citizens as well. We engaged, and of course, you approved all this, we engaged Betsy McNamara as a fundraising consultant. She has worked previously for the Nashua Soup Kitchen, for the Capital Center for the Arts, and other significant fundraising efforts throughout New Hampshire. Over the course of several months, she developed a fundraising plan, a plan of action. She also interviewed a number of potential donors and activists around the community, has reported to you that she's very optimistic about her fundraising goals, and more recently has been talking with potential major donors who are interested in donating to this project. And she reported to you that the way a successful fundraising effort proceeds is you start with the large donors, the largest donors, maybe as much as $1 million, and then proceed on out from that to the smaller, medium-sized, then smaller donors. We also engaged a new market tax credit consultant, because we said from the beginning that part of the money that we could raise or obtain from outside the city, from non-city sources, were new market tax credits. We engaged Neil Cannon, who has also reported, I believe directly to you, and has indicated that he's very optimistic that we can obtain a, an allocation of new market tax credits sufficient to bring in $4 million in cash, that would come from private sources to whom the tax credits would be sold. New market tax credits have been successfully used in many communities in New Hampshire to build projects, publicly spirited projects, in Concord, in Keene, in Manchester, and this project fits well within the criteria for the new market tax credit program. We put out an RFP for architects, and about 11 or 12 architects from all over the East Coast submitted proposals. The steering committee reviewed those proposals and decided to interview six architects. Those architects were interviewed, they had some very exciting and interesting ideas, some changes to the concept plan that was developed by the, by Duncan Webb, that could make the project, I think, a stronger one, and we could discuss the details of what they've, what they've suggested. But the final architect has not been decided upon or recommended to you yet, the meeting is on December 3 to go through the, to go through the discussion and to see who the steering committee will recommend. In addition, we put out an RFP for construction managers to manage the project. We got, again, 10, around 10 proposals. We interviewed four construction managers, and again, those selections will be discussed at the meeting on December 3, and we will recommend to you, the, or the committee will recommend to you, the construction manager that they feel would be most successful with respect to this project. We put out an RFP regarding venue operators. We received a proposal from spectacle management, a very qualified and experienced operator who could oversee the project, who is extremely optimistic and believes that contrary to what we might have thought, that this, this venue can be operated in a way that would require no subsidy whatsoever, and in fact, might turn a slight profit. We know that other venues in New England do that, like the Palace, they operate on a break-even basis every year. Other, other successful venues around New England are in Concord, in Lexington, in Lowell, even in London area, and the operator is very optimistic that we can equal or exceed those results and run a very successful performing arts center here in Nashua. We formed a capital campaign committee, which has been meeting regularly for a number of months, in order to begin, execute the Betsy McNamara Plan. Deborah Novotny of the Enterprise Bank has agreed to be chair of the committee, and the, and she is very active in the community, formerly chair of the, or president of the Rotary Club, and active in many other ways in Nashua. We are developing articles of incorporation, and those are in drafts, but with everything else going on, they haven't yet been finalized. So we have learned a lot about this, through all this investigation and all this work, we've learned a lot about what it will take to first construct and then operate a successful performing arts venue, which will bring, we think, at least 70,000 people a year to Main Street. The Palace brings 140,000 people to, to Manchester's downtown every year, even if we achieve half of that, that's 70,000, 70,000 people a year. One thing we've learned, and there's, so there are two simple concepts that are incorporated in this resolution. Number one, we've learned that in order to, and let me step it back a minute, we believe, and we're very optimistic, that we can raise not $4 million, but $6.5 million, consisting of new market tax credits and private donations. This is based upon the work of Betsy McNamara, the fundraising committee, and Neil, Neil Cannon, the new market tax credits consultant. So we're looking at bringing in $6.5 million. But what we have learned is that if we want big donors, and if we want to qualify for a new market tax credit, $4 million, we need to have a designed project. So as the resolution was passed, the resolution authorized the purchase of the building at 201 Main Street, but that was all before money was obtained. And we've now learned that in order to qualify for the new market tax credits, and really in order to get significant donors to contribute, we need to have a design project. And as we've talked with the architects, we know that ultimately, the design may be changed from the original concept plan. For example, it may be that it's, it's much more advantageous to bring the center to the first floor and have some retail along Pearl Street, it might even be advantageous to reverse the orientation of the Performing Arts Center from one where the stage is on the east side, or the Main Street side, switch the stage down to the other side, to the west side, and then have the entrance come in from Main Street. So as we ultimately pick the architect, these are the kind of decisions that need to be made, based upon what we've learned in terms of operating a successful performing arts center. But one idea that is incorporated in the resolution is it would allow us to spend the money to design the project now, because it is a chicken-and-egg thing, we think we can get $6.5 million, but to do that, we need to have a design project. So that's number one. Number two, it proposes that we still bring in four, at least $4 million, and I'm saying, our experts are telling us we can do a lot more than that, but that we, that we create more flexibility as to how this money would be used. For example, because we have the operator who is saying that we can operate this as a profit, it may make more sense to devote money that we bring in to reducing the project costs. For example, the, the new market tax credits can be used to, to, to reduce the amount of the bond that we need to borrow. So maybe we would end up borrowing not 15 million, but maybe 15 and 1/2 is authorized, but maybe it would be 14 and 1/2, or maybe it would be 13 and 1/2. So the resolution as proposed still requires that we bring in at least $4 million, but it allows us later on to decide how we think that four or five, and I'm saying $6.5 million can best be allocated, to the reduction of the, the project costs, or to the endowment, or both. So the two simple changes that are proposed here, number one, it would allow us to design the project before the, design the performing arts center before, immediately, and number two, it would authorize enough flexibility that down the road, we could decide how we want to use the $6.5 million that our experts and consultants believe that we can obtain. And I'm, of course, and I don't know if Tim has anything else to add, Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director.
No, I believe you covered everything, Mr. Mayor.
And we're both available for questions, if anybody has any at this time, or, you know, later on, or whatever you want to do.
Does anybody on the board have questions of the mayor? All of them, does he go in?
I, I do have questions, but since this is a public hearing, I'll hold mine for the committee meeting. Thank you.
And I'd be glad to stay around for that, so that way.
Yeah.
Alderman Jenny?
If it's appropriate to ask a question, how much money are you talking about to design, how much do you need to design?
We think it's about $1 million. I mean, usually, it's 10% of the project cost, so we're projecting $1 million or a little bit more. But we think it can be done, they're, they're telling us $1 million, right? And we would, we would sign a contract that would fix the price, and there's a little difference between the architects, but a million dollars is the, the ballpark.
Alderman Jenny?
Please. So why aren't you just asking for authorization to borrow $1 million to design the project? Why are you tying it up into the, the resolution that was already passed that had this condition about the $4 million before you borrow any more money?
Well, because the, the resolution has passed, and we've discussed all this with bonds counsel, the resolution that passed says we can't spend any more of the money that is been designated, the, the Board of Aldermen authorized that money be borrowed up to, up to 15 million, but said, in the original resolution, that only $2 million could be spent, period, until at least $4 million is obtained. It turns out that in order to get $4 million or $6 million, we have to have a design project. So as, so we have this chicken-and-egg issue. We can get $6.5 million, we think, if we have a design project, but we need to spend money now, now, to design the project in order to, to obtain those funds, and right now, as passed, the resolution doesn't authorize the expenditure of any money for, for design.
Just one last thing, but couldn't, couldn't you, couldn't you have a resolution that, that was specifically aimed at the $1 million you need for design, and not tie it into the, the current resolution, which requires the $4 million to be raised as a precedent?
We could, we could only seek that change, but it seemed like we were here when I discussed this with Brian before, I mean, I just, it seemed so, to us at least, pretty clear that we can bring in more than $4 million, that it probably makes the most sense to try to reduce the project cost, and to just provide the flexibility to, and again, the Board of Aldermen would need to approve some of this. We thought it would be best, since we're here, to try to create the flexibility so that the steering committee and the Board of Aldermen, the city, could decide how best to allocate the $6.5 million.
All set. When I call for public hearing, that's when you can speak. So I will now take testimony in favor of this bill. Anyone that wants to speak in favor, please come up to the microphone. Anyone in opposition, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Karen Bill, resident of Nashua. Do you need my address?
Yes.
95 Parnell Place here in Nashua. So along with Alderman Jettie's comments, which were a very good, thank you, I have a few questions myself. So we had to raise the $4 million, okay? If $1 million is for design, and there was a stipulation by the Board of Aldermen that you couldn't use more than $2 million, well, you're going to have $1 million when you raise the four. So you could raise that, you could use that, okay? And if you're confident that you're going to raise the 6.5, well, that's fine, there's no resolution necessary, because you only had to raise $4 million within two years, and it being signed by you, Major Donchess, on February 20 of 2018, giving the deadline to be 2/20/20, for that $4 million to be raised. So if we think that there's a lot more money out there in the community, it would seem like, raise the money and spend the $1 million, because it was for the design, correct? Part of that $4 million could have been for the design. And I understand the chicken or the egg thing, because a lot of nonprofits, and, and I've been part of some in the city myself, if you want to build a new building or have a huge capital campaign, yes, you need to elicit a professional fundraiser, you need to have a design, all of these are expenses which occur well in advance of knowing the actual cost of your project. So to just throw out and say, we need $4 million before we can move forward, and we have two years to raise that, that's all well and good, but there should have been some knowledge, some forethought, and some very hard knowledge about what that needed to be, to have a design, to have a professional fundraiser onboard, to know the tick marks of what it's going to take to get to that number. And, and having been told by these professional fundraisers that there's $6.5 million in the community, that's great, whether it's from non-city, private enterprise or not. Where are we at, if I might ask, toward the $4 million? What's our, what's our bank account number toward the $4 million at this point? Who can answer that for me? Yes?
I can. Well, we haven't, in answer to the first question, why don't we just take the $4 million and use that to design? We don't qualify, for example, with the new market tax credits, we, we don't even qualify, we can't even submit an application without a design. So without a design, forget that, forget $4 million.
Well, wait a minute, forget the $4 million, isn't, this is going to be a nonprofit entity, correct? The Performing Arts Center?
Yes.
So the, the new market tax credits are totally different than just someone, say, Alderman Karen, making a very generous donation of $1 million out of her own pocket. Either way, it's going to be, it's going to be a donation. So as a nonprofit entity, if somebody wants to make a donation, it's a tax credit, period, versus a new market tax credit, which is fine that it's a new market tax credit, but as a nonprofit performing arts center, every donation will be a donation, a tax deductible donation. So what's the difference if we are raising money now, as an authorized nonprofit, recognized in the state of New Hampshire, versus waiting to get new market tax credits? I would think that we would have.
But you have to wait for me to finish the answer.
Okay.
All right, so we have the potential of a $4 million raising from the sale of new market tax credits, but to, to even get to that point, you have to have a design project. Number two, the fundraiser is telling us that we have the possibility, and they're talking to some specific people who don't wish to be known yet, about giving half million, maybe even a million dollars for the naming rights, but they're not going to do that without a design project. So to get the money, we need to be able to show what, specifically, what this is going to look like. And I think you had a second question, but I forgot what that is.
Where are we at at the $4 million? What's in the bank right now?
So what the fundraising consultant has advised is that in, in every successful fundraising campaign that she's worked on, and if you think about, say, the soup kitchen, or any of the others, in order to be successful, you should not start raising small dollar amounts. You go and you find your big donors first, you get them to contribute, and then you use that momentum to then work to kind of medium-sized, then to small donors. So her advice has been, and I think her record demonstrates she knows what she's talking about, do not go out and try to get, you know, $100 donors at this point, try to get, you know, work on a, on a, get, get your committee together, solicit big donations, and get your big donors at the beginning. So following her advice, we've not really tried to, you know, get, you know, $10 or $100, we're, the first donation needs to be a half a million or a million dollars.
I absolutely understand, and I wasn't thinking that the first round of donations, having been through this process before, as an executive director in the nonprofit sector in this city, I know that the $10 and the $20 donations are huge, but they are a large number at the bottom of the tier. They are nowhere near the top of the tier, where you're looking at naming rights, half a million, a million, hundreds of thousands of dollars, or even the new market tax credits, which will come from businesses to the tune of maybe $50,000 or something along those lines. But I think that when this was voted on by the residents of Nashua, that, I think many who maybe, well, I don't know what many people thought, but that there, maybe that there were some donors already lined up, because there was such confidence exuded by those for this project, that, you know, we, all we need is two years to raise $4 million. So it's, either they were a pie in the sky, you know, dreaming in some room, or they actually had some forethought and had some discussions with people with money. And I understand naming rights, I understand large donations, but people who want naming rights, they know where the building sits. It's not like it's a project in a field with no, with nothing. It's not an empty field. It's an actual building, a current building on Main Street, so they know the location. They may not have the design of every window and floor and seat, but there must have been some discussion about a minimum number of seats to, to bring in certain acts, and how much tickets would be sold for, so that there was a little bit more heft in the information for them to think, okay, I have money, I am a philanthropic individual who plans on spending, whether it's an anonymous donation or not, or naming rights, that they know where the building is, and that there's going to be extensive design work, but that there had to have been some commitment somewhere along the way, from engaged donors and known philanthropists, to have assumed that in two years, $4 million could be raised, regardless of the new market tax credits, which is a whole nother second step. And I applaud you if you get that money. If you get another $2.5 million from those tax credits, great. But I think that if we're still on, and, and another question I had was, if this, if this resolution goes, goes through, does now the two-year clock start ticking today, and the clock is reset, versus February 20 of this year? Or is it still ticking as of February 20, and you have a year and roughly four months to get that same amount of money? Just to say that there will be tax credits involved after there's a design module submitted. So when does that clock, when does the clock start?
I, I think the clock would remain the same, but, but the, but the, the possi, the chances of bringing in the $4 million from the new market tax credits alone, is, that would happen in 2019, so within the, within the two years, and so I think we're fine with the two years.
So it's still 2/20/20 is the deadline, and I know that you said that we weren't, you know, you weren't at the point of the, the $10 donors, 50, 100, and all those, you know?
Well, those people, you know, we want enthusiastic support, which we, I think we have, and, but the advice of, of, of professional, the professionals we have, is that if, that you need to get the big donations first.
Right.
Because if you allow someone who's thinking about giving $1 million to give $1,000 and sort of walk away. to give $1,000 and sort of walk away, you're leaving a lot of money on the table. So the idea is, and again, this has been done over and over again, to try to get the big donations first.
And I'm not sure if you had answered the question. I'm sorry if you didn't and I missed it. What's in the bank up against the $4 million? What's our balance?
I mean, I don't think we... We don't have much... I don't... We haven't really sought donations, so...
Do we have nothing? Do we have nothing in the bank at this point?
Basically, we haven't really... We have followed the advice of the fundraiser and had have not sought donations until we get the early, large contributors.
Okay. So the whole thing is changing so that some of this money can be used for design when it wasn't before. And in 2019, there was an expectation from everyone around in this room that there's gonna be a windfall of $6.5 million between private funding, which will include New Market Tax Credits.
Correct.
So our window just got really smaller, and the expectation just got much heftier.
I just wanna clear... Make it clear that it's... These aren't like my ideas. These are the ideas that the Capital Campaign Committee and the fundraiser and the experts have come up with. I mean, so I'm telling you what we... So this isn't sort of my theory. It is the theory and the plan of action that people who are very experienced in these areas have developed.
Absolutely. I spoke to some of those same people when we were investigating a capital campaign many years ago. But I just wanted to know, you know, I don't wanna be disillusioned and think that we have a bank account somewhere in the city that has money in it when there is not. And yet, we, as a city, do currently pay for operating costs of the building, although they may be minimal, of heat and electricity, and that we do not yet have any funds for this. So I just wanted to understand that fully, and...
Well, there are actually 10 apartments in the building, five of which are rented. So we are bringing in more money through those rents than we used to bring in through property taxes. So there are funds to support the operation of the building as it currently exists.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else would like to give testimony in opposition?
Thank you. My name is Fred Teboom, and I reside at 24 Cheyenne Drive. I should say that I also own a nonprofit. And I raised about $150,000 from private money. It took four long years. So across the Holocaust Memorial. Let me just summarize a little bit more succinctly what this resolution is about. It allows the $15.5 million bond to be used for the design before $4 million is raised for private funding. It also allows New Market Tax Credit to count towards the $4 million private funding. And it allows private funding to be used for anything related to PAC other than exclusively operating costs. Now, those are three good things, but let's take a look at them. The New Market Tax Credits are really not private funds. They're really redirected tax money. Somebody gets a tax credit, let's say, $100,000, and they don't pay that in taxes. They pay that in a contribution. Same as paying a charitable contribution. They're really not private funding. Now, these three changes, I'm not against them. I think they're good things to do. Why wait for the design till the $4 million is raised? You might as well spend a million trying to design this thing. Because if you're gonna do it, you have to design it. You already spent $2 million buying the building and the land not even knowing you're gonna raise the $4 million. So these are good things. The problem that I see is there was a referendum November last year. And in the referendum last year, and I have a copy of it, it says exactly what's in this resolution before you... Before it's marked off. No one in the city, when they voted on this, was told about these changes. And I'd like to know, Mr. Mayor, it's my first question, on what basis are you making these changes? Shouldn't you go back to the voters and get them to vote on this?
Well, you could do that. I mean, it would take, you know, years. But I mean, in my opinion, the people who voted for the project, and it was a majority, would believe, and I think even some of the opponents, you've kind of suggested so yourself, that it would make sense to... That it makes sense to, if you need to design the project to gain the funds that are necessary to proceed, that you design the project. You know, I don't think people would've said, "Oh, you know, you didn't..." We didn't... It wasn't understood that we would need a design project at the time this was proposed. And so I think if that had been understood and it had said we could spend money for acquisition and design rather than just acquisition, I don't think that people would've voted differently.
That was not my question. My question was, can you do this? Have you checked with your legal counsel to see that you can make a change to a resolution that was voted by only 1.5%, by the way?
The answer is yes. We were just... We've gone over this in detail with bond counsel and that they're the people who, you know, decide whether bonds can be sold. David can give you the name of our bond firm. And we were on the phone with them last week and today, and they're fine.
How about Attorney Bolton? He's the city attorney, not the bond counsel.
The city attorneys are fine.
They said fine?
Yes.
Well, I need to ask you because I'm not convinced, but I'm not your legal counsel.
Well, the vote was only advisory. I mean, it's not... It wasn't a binding vote. The vote went to the people. What do you... It was kind of a, "What do you think? Should we go ahead?" What?
It says authorize... No, no, no. I have a copy of it right in front of me. It doesn't say advisory. It says authorizing the mayor and the city to issue bonds. Authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $15 million, $500,000. It's not advisory.
Well...
It's compulsory.
The Board of Alderman are in a city are the only ones who can authorize a bond issue.
It's a vote before the... Anyway, let's go on. I raised this issue. I'm not your legal advisor.
But I appreciate... Now, Fred, Mr. Teboom, I appreciate your coming to all of the architectural interviews.
I'll get to that.
And you've shown great interest in the project. And I appreciate that.
I just don't wanna get stopped. It won't be me. I already have a lawsuit against the city. That's already in the Supreme Court.
We don't need another one, yes, exactly.
I don't need another one. But somebody else could. Somebody else could stop it. Easily done. At least easily brought to court. It does raise an issue that I've had a problem with with this board and a previous board, and maybe the board before that. That is, you approve bond resolutions without really having done the due diligence of figuring out the cost. Bond resolutions do get done after everything else is established, the final step. As an example, we did the Bosse Parkway. Debated for years. I sponsored a bond resolution for Bosse Parkway. I personally did. I was the 10th vote. I took a lot of grief on it. But I did it only after we had very detailed cost studies and options. In fact, I put the options in the bond resolution, option one, option two, you may recall. Very detailed. Now you say, "Well, we should've written it differently. We should've thought through this whole charitable thing." It wasn't thought through. I know that it happened during the previous board when they voted it down. You didn't get the 10 votes that you need. And Clemens raised his hand and said, "I wanna go for a referendum." And somebody else stuck into $4 million. I think that was done on the floor. She sticks her hand, she was there. On the floor, somebody said, "$4 million bucks." Didn't have any rationale. No thought. Great, let's vote that one. Now let's put it before the voters. Great, let's do that one. No thought at all. That's not how you do bond resolutions. Let her go on. I reviewed, probably the only public person that did, not being a member of the board, the steering committee. I reviewed all 12 proposals for A&E Services. I reviewed all 11 proposals for the construction manager. And I reviewed the one and only proposal for the operating service, spectacle management. I attended. You saw me there. Sitting on the side, like a fly on a wall. Six bidder interviews for A&E Services, all the six. Your three bidder interviews for construction manager. All bidders qualified, in my opinion. I got considerable construction experience. Some obviously more than others. Now, what interested me was the cost for the system. The very reason you're here, the costs. That's what bonds are all about, the costs. The $15.5 million, in case you've forgotten. Some of you probably have never forgotten this. It's $2 million for land purchase. It is $1 million for design. It is $1 million for staging and audiovisual equipment, after all, it's a performance theater. Now, just a building. And $11.5 million for construction, a memorandum written by Tim Cummins and presented by Duncan Webb. I tried to dig into this $11.5 million. You know something? I never could find the rationale. I could never find a spreadsheet on it. What I did find, when I did a write-in law law request to Mr. Cummins, to the city clerk, I found that Fantasy Consulting had been hired by Duncan Webb to do costing for this project. They were paid to do costing for this project. Guess what they came up with? In detailed spreadsheets. That is for Main Street, also for Court Street and for this new building at Spring Street. Guess what they came up with? For this project on Main Street, $16.4 million. $16.4. $16.4 million is... I can show you the spreadsheets. In fact, if you want to, I'll email you the spreadsheets. In fact, I will email you the spreadsheets. What was happened then, this was never made public. I got the sheets because I asked for it on the write-in law law request. Then what happened is Mr. Alderman McCarthy, who was very much involved, went to Harvey Construction. Harvey does a lot of work for the city, for the schools. And asked Harvey Construction to take a look at Fantasy's estimates. At no cost. Fantasy got paid, but not Harvey. Guess what Harvey came up with? $15 million. When I asked him, and I talked to Harvey, I talked to the Vice President, Brunier, I said, "What's the reduction based on?" He says, "We made a comparison. It's in Boston market, Fantasy's a Boston organization, and in the Hampshire labor market. And we figured we'd take a reduction." That's how they come up with $15 million. Then McCarthy went back to them and said, "I want you to de-scope it. We don't do much on the interior. We don't raise the roof. We use the mechanical. Get the cost down." And they came up with an estimate of $10.5 million. And I asked Brunier, "What validity is behind it?" He says, "Well, it's really not very valid because you have to do things that couldn't possibly be built, that you couldn't possibly build a theater with." So what you're left with is a $16.4 million estimate to do the job. And a $15 million estimate to do the job. Certainly not this magical $11.5 million that Tim Cummins came up with that he never backed up. I'll stop you a minute and ask Mr. Cummins if you ever backed up in the spreadsheet.
Would you like to comment?
I would. I don't know if it makes sense for me to comment now or wait till Mr. Teboom's done with all his comments in its totality so I can respond to them.
Okay. It's acceptable. Now, the original design, well, the final design by Duncan Webb, in summary, for this performance theater is 550 tiered seating. It's like, you know, Cinematic tiered seating. 550 tiered seating, 500 table seating, standing round tables on a flat surface. You have to be able to bring the staging down to a flat surface. And 1,000 standing. And 1,000 standing. By 1,000 standing, so I can have a rock concert. But people today, you know, they wave and they stand, you know, I've seen it, not my generation, you know, they get the big kicks, standing around waving, stomping in unison, thousands. That was the design. And on the second floor up, second floor up, because the downtown merchants who paid for the studies of Duncan Webb through parking meter fees called downtown improvement funds insisted on having retail space on the bottom floor. That was the design. That is the design currently. Doesn't, law proposals, there's no other design right now on the table. So, $16.55 million. I should also mention that in the list that Fantasy prepared, in the detailed spreadsheet, he has some exclusions, quite a few exclusions. In fact, one of them is no hazardous material. And we found out through our confidence with the bidders, there is hazardous material. Also, no escalation costs. They figured the starting date of, I think, March of 2018. So even those costs have question marks on them. Now comes along the sole bidder, Spectacle Management, only one who's going to operate this thing. And what is it that they say? Forget the 500 seating, 550 seating. Forget the 500 on tables. That's not a correct venue. By the way, there was one, Duncan Webb estimated a $1 million revenue a year. But Spectacle Management says, read the proposal. You've got to have a 750 theater, C theater, to make sense in this region, to attract the venues you want, to get people to come in to a theater like 750 that provides a revenue so you can pay that particular performance. 750, they said, and $2 million a year. And if you do 750 theater and $2 million a year, I will not need your $4 million from your charitable funding. You can keep that, because you'll make enough money, we'll break even. All they wanted is a $1 lease a year. But only there's a 750 theater and $2 million revenue. And that, by the way, has been backed up by some, some of the A and E vendors that made presentations. If you think of the Palace Theater, I forgot how big the seating is, but it's far greater than even 750. So, where are you? Well, if you have a 750 C theater, you need a balcony, in a footprint of the Alex Hughes store on that building behind it. You need a balcony. And therein lies the suggestions to place the performance theater from the ground up. Because think about it. You need to have very long strusses, about 100 feet strusses. You've got to have columns to support the strusses. And if you put them in the basement, they won't bother anybody. If you put these columns on the first floor, you take away a lot of so-called retail space. It makes no sense. The only thing that makes sense is build this thing from the ground, first floor up. There are nooks and crannies and spaces that you build this up. That's a very nice for limited retail, places where people can meet before the performance, meet after the performance, have little performances, where there's no main performance. All that makes sense. But it takes a quantity. Sole bidder to operate is 750 seats. And therein lies an issue about the cost. I don't think your cost is anywhere near what you need. I think if you can do this resolution, and it's acceptable to make changes to what voters voted on, then make it a $20 million resolution. Add the money that Fantasy proposed, $16.5 million for construction, differently, $1.5 and $6.5, it's about $5 million. Make this a $20 million resolution. Then you can build the system you want, the theater you want. Put in these changes, they're fine. Make a theater that you can be proud of. Not some rink and ink operation. You know, Court Street is an example of what fails. I was here in 1993 when we voted, as Wilson was here, when we voted, Court Street. And Court Street as a performance center has been a failure. If you're going to go all this way, do it the correct way. Now, I'm not the guy, I'm the guy known to not spend money. Not spend money foolishly. If you're going to do the resolution, make it $20 million. And one more thing, the so-called $16.5 million charitable money. I was here when a consultant made a presentation. These new market tax credits, she says, I'm quoting her almost, are highly competitive and nationwide, not New Hampshire wide, nationwide, highly competitive, no guarantees. Do not get caught in that trap. I know, I, like I said, I spend a lot of time fundraising. It's very difficult. A lot easier to just raise your hand and say, raises money. That's my, that's my recommendation. And if you don't do it, I can support the current resolution. Thank you.
Can I, would you mind if I responded to that?
Yeah.
Because I largely agree with it. But I, I think that, except for the, the cost estimates, first of all, I agree we should do it right. It might take 750 seats. I think Tim can defend that, you can show the, the, the cost estimates. But in reality, you've been to all the architectural interviews. You've seen how creative they are. And I'm going to speak for you and say you've been pretty impressed by the creativity and the thought that's gone into this project by some of these very capable architects. And in the end, we are unlikely to build exactly what they, what Duncan Webb proposed. I mean, it was a concept. He said the second floor. I think most likely, it'll go to the first floor, which will not require the raising of the roof as much. You heard the Icon project. You heard the Icon presentation. That was, they, they put forward a very creative way of bringing it to the first floor and reversing things. All of the architects have said they, they could bring it in on cost. They've all said that they thought they could do it. But I don't think we should go, I think we should leave it at $15 million. But if we're successful in the new market tax credit application, which our expert is very confident we could get, if we ever had to go above $15 million, we have $4 million coming into the project. So if we had to go a little over in order to accomplish the goals you've outlined, that would be an available source. We still think we can bring it in based upon what the architects are saying at 15 and a half, but, you know, there's a $4 million cushion from the new market tax credits. But what I would ask Fred is that you stay involved in this and that you continue to come to these meetings and maybe participate in a little more than you have. And I think that you've seen how many people are involved in this whole thing. I think if we work together in terms of trying to come up with a, a quality project, we can do that, and one that the city will be proud of.
Appreciate that. I'm just saying that as a member of the public, I can't speak at these meetings.
Well, maybe we'll open it up. If you keep your comments a little shorter, it would help.
Mr. Cummings, did you want to address?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. And I do want to just take a quick opportunity to address a couple comments that were just made to make sure the record is, is accurate and reflective, especially of which is because there was a gentleman who was referenced, who could not be here to actually correct the record for himself. So President McCarthy did not unilaterally do anything. There was a small working group assembled of various community stakeholders, folks in the arts community, folks from the city, folks from the downtown. And they got together over the course of the feasibility study on occasions, I would say, once a quarter. And it was through those meetings that the idea came about to reduce the scope of the concept plan from what is articulated in the Fantasy Consulting report as option one to an option 1A to an option 1B. And at that point, it was all through our architect and our Fantasy Consulting who went out and had those cost estimates independently verified, because there was a question raised during the working group meeting that there was these third-party consultants who were not from the local market, and they really wanted to make sure that we had accurate labor rates and whatnot for, for the cost estimates as provided. So those cost estimates, cost estimates were independently verified by a local group. And all that data is, is, is available and up on the city's website. And, and I thought I've made that clear on, on occasion. So I just want to make sure that, that is accurately reflected for the record. The other point I wanted to make is because this was reported in the news recently, this summer, inaccurately, I want to make sure folks know that there is money raised, so it's not like we don't have any money raised for the Performing Arts Center. I don't know what that number is. There's a separate effort going on, and it's being led by our professional fundraising consultant, a capital committee, and City Arts Nashua. And City Arts Nashua is, is currently the, under the care and custody of those funds. So there is money available, but we are focusing on the big dollar donations right now, and then we'll be transitioning into a third, a second, and then a third phase. And the third phase is more of a public campaign that folks have all been, all been referencing. So I just want to make sure that, that is accurate.
I just want to say, at the public hearing, I talked to Seamus Fantasy personally, and he is ticked off. Told me he's ticked off because he was never consulted on the so-called reduction of a $16.4 million. I should also say, I've never seen anything by the so-called steering, whatever that group is that Tim mentioned. Only thing I've seen are the spreadsheets by Fantasy, the editing of the spreadsheet by Harvey, leading to the $15 million, and the editing of the spreadsheet by Harvey leading to the $10.5 million. If he, Mr. Cummings has backed up to $11.5 million, then he should produce that. I've asked him that several times. I've heard him say in a public meeting, no, following a public meeting, and he had various sources, he's always been kind of fuzzy about where his $11.5 million came from. I've seen his memo with advice to Alderman about $11.5. I've never seen the detail. If he has them, I request that he produce that information. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
I've provided it on multiple occasions, and in fact, I know Mr. Teaboo has it.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in opposition to this? Please come up to the mic, state your name and address.
Hello. My name is Barbara Pressley. I live at 11 Orchard Avenue. And I'm so pleased to know that my alderman is going to be the first one with the million-dollar My primary concern tonight is the integrity of our local Board of Aldermen. I have always been, I guess, naive enough, but I think a lot of people are very naive, that when something is placed on the ballot for the citizens to vote, that it's a rather sacred. And I'm deeply concerned, I understand, putting something on the ballot, on the ballot, by the way, is not a frivolous endeavor. It's really hard to do. I'm distressed to learn tonight that the group that was so much in favor of this, it's pretty clear now that they did not understand the magnitude and the complication of a project like this. I think you, so many of you are new members to the Board of Aldermen. And I think you've been placed in an extremely awkward position, because you did not vote to put it on the ballot. So you've been caught in the middle. Do you live up to what was voted on explicitly and exactly? Or do you find another way to accomplish what you want to accomplish? I do believe that the plan, I commend the board and all the subcommittees that have worked on this. I think you've really done a good job to find out what it would take to really have a quality project like this. And I commend the work that's been done. I certainly like the suggestion of Alderman Jettie. I'm trying to think of some way that you can sort of save the integrity. Can the public ever trust again anything that is put on the ballot if you so drastically change the meaning of it through a resolution? And it's clear to me that you've learned a lot. You've learned that what you want to do is probably the best way to accomplish this. I thought the idea of getting the money to get the design is, might be a solution for you. Nobody wants to give a lot of money or time to something that they can't see and understand. And it seems logical to me that maybe some way that you could think about, finding a resolution where you did not violate the public decision, and you could still proceed with the next step, which clearly is to get a design. Think about it. If you come in with a really exciting, great design, you could have an enormous amount of support from everybody. And I think that would work. I hope that you won't rush into this. In a way, you have the reputation of local government in your laps, not by your own doing or own solution or suggestion. I hope you don't feel the need to rush this through and support it and push it through tonight. I'd also like to mention that a lot of people don't know about this, and a lot of it has to do with the holiday season. But I've, I've been really quite surprised that people who watch government, and there's no press here tonight, so they don't even know what you're voting on.
Oh, are you? Well, I'm sorry, I haven't met you before. You with the telegraph?
Good.
We have new press lately.
Well, great. They got, they got the message. So anyway, you have a, pardon me?
They're not wearing those little hats.
Oh, well, they're not sitting up in the, in the press box. So anyway, you have a tough decision to make. And I, I'm sorry for those of you that are new that you've been placed in this situation, but you have. And I think Alderman Jettie has come up with a great idea where you can maybe proceed, get the money, get a good design, and not violate the sacredness of a citizen's vote. And you would have time to do that. You would have time to get it on another ballot. If you want to change what they voted on, let them vote to make the change. But I think your integrity is at stake. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? You have to wait till I call again. In this first round, is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Seeing no one, once again, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this legislation? Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Karen Bell, 95 Parnell Place, Nashua, New Hampshire. Just a couple questions, observations, and things since the past couple people have spoken. The Palace Theater has 880 seats since, after they had the renovation. It was 1,100 seats, they had a renovation, now it's 880. I've been there, it's a great venue. And I don't know, Fred, if these are all facts, but if you have a 550 tier, 500 table and 1,000 standing in this, the first thing, those are the numbers that Fred was saying, the first thing that comes to mind to me doing the math is over 2,000 people at full capacity. And Alderman Obi O'Brien, you would be the best to know what's going to be the capacity, the fire capacity in this building. So, and having gone through a feasibility study myself many years ago in this community, in a nonprofit, during the feasibility study, we had hired an architect. It was part of the cost of the feasibility study. We had architects come in and do a plan, and we knew what the plan was, right down to the rooms, which way the doors opened and everything else. And here was the number. Boom. During the feasibility study. So that when we sought out donors, and then we went and met with them, we could say, this is the land that it's on, this is the cost, and here's the amount of animals that this building is going to hold. So they knew right off the bat. That was part of the feasibility study. So in my mind, it seems like some things happened backwards, some things happened backwards or, or are happening backwards. So, and my last kind of question from my first round, I'm not sure if it was answered or I didn't pose it as an explicit question. Is the Performing Arts Center already in, or does it already have nonprofit status? Is it a 501(c)(3) currently in the state of New Hampshire so that, God forbid, I know we don't want the $10 donors yet, but if somebody all of a sudden found out that they were terminal and had a lot of money and thought, I want to have a tax benefit or make a donation or whatever to the arts, and have a contribution in Nashua to a nonprofit entity, are we, is the Performing Arts Center a nonprofit? Is that status already secured? Can anybody answer that question for me?
Mr. Jim, I can answer that question. So the simple answer is, we are working with City Arts Nashua. They are our fiscal agent. They have the 501(c) charitable tax, charitable tax deduction status. There is an effort underway to receive certification through the IRS. That is a three to six-monthish process. And, you know, and so until that is actually achieved, we created an avenue with City Arts Nashua so, so there could be a way of donations being given and them being tax deductible.
City Arts Nashua could, in fact, accept donations, as we speak, for the Perform, for the Performing Arts Center. And if people didn't- And if people didn't know that, they know that now, so that if they wanted to consider making a contribution, an early one, even though it's not going to be naming rights or anything else, in any amount to the Performing Arts Center, they could do so through the city arts. Good to know.
Correct. Also, I've been involved in the design of numerous schools here in Nashua. We always have the fire marshal involved in reviewing all plans and having to sign off on the design.
Great.
Aldman, Melissa Golia?
Yes. Just to clarify Mr. Tebow's comment, he was talking about different options. So it could be 1,000 at one time, it could be 500 tiered at one time, or it could be tabletops. Because as we have moved through this project, one of the things we've looked at is flexibility in use. And so do we want movable seats and those sorts of things? So what he was referencing were three different options.
Different options.
Not all of that at one time.
Not totally combined?
No, no.
Thank you.
Because I think all of us would be very afraid of having 2,000 people in there. Yeah. And, and I just think that one of the things all of us have come to realize, because many of us work both public and nonprofit, is that some of the things we need to do in the public arena happen in a little bit of a different way because we are public and how we have to go about writing resolutions and passing resolutions and moving forward. So we don't have the flexibility to just say, okay, we're going to do a design, even though that kind of makes sense. And at one point, those of us from the public and, as well as members of city government and this board, who were on that initial committee, we were like, oh, we have to get money to put a design together, but you can't put a design together until you've put out the bids. And, and there's just a little bit of a difference in the process.
I understand.
Working from the public side. So I think all of us have felt that, ooh, I want to do this, but ooh, no, I can't because this is a public process. So I think that there's been a little bit of that that feels very different for many of us who have been involved on both sides, nonprofit as well as public. Yeah. But no, we're not putting 2,000 people in there at one time.
Thank you. Are you all, oh.
Mr. Chairman, yeah. Having some 35 years' expertise in such matters, state RSA says you can't build a building that is not going to be fire safe. It is going to be heavily sprinkled. It's a place of public assembly. Those that do go into any establishment in a city, you'll notice that the certificate of occupancy has to be proudly displayed so that every person can say to make sure that they are not themselves, are getting themselves into an overcrowded situation. In the discussion of the movable, floating plans, such as movable tables and seats and everything, it sounds like there'll be several certificates of occupancy met with that. And each, the fire marshals will work up with that, come up with that particular amount, and because every table and chair takes up a space, and those are guarded against exiting the building. So I'm quite confident in that, that it will be done appropriately and to our level of expertise and the safety that we in Nashua demand, so.
Absolutely.
But I appreciate your concern. Thank you so much.
Sounded like a high number when I was doing the math, so I thought that, you know, I was glad that you were here and other members of this, of the Board of Aldermen to answer. And thank you so much for your clarification on things. I appreciate that. And I would like to say, just as a reader of The Telegraph on a daily basis, that it would be nice if there were maybe some updates on the funds that have flowed into this project because I think that most people are in the dark, and they were maybe led to believe that there were some initial donors who were stepping up. They were on deck. They were at the plate with, you know, some large funds to donate. And I think that people don't know, I, I know that people don't know, and they would like to be kept a little bit more abreast maybe about what's going on and maybe even the dollar figure because it's, people who are considering donating like to know that there's something in, in the pot. So thank you again very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
I did not intend to speak tonight, but Chairman Dow, with, with your acceptance here.
You have a name and address.
I am in a minute. Dick Ionicon, Swart Harris, 35 Swart Harris. There ought to be a group that can talk for and against, so that's what I'd like to present tonight. After listening to speakers, it's very important. First of all, for those who think we're against, our group has probably raised more than $4,000 to $500,000 for the performing arts since we've been in town. We've been very active in supporting the arts. I'm not sure if people have supported the, what used to be the Nashua Symphony, which is now Symphony of New Hampshire, is that for years, we looked for support. When I first came into town, I worked with the symphony, and was on their board, chairman for part of the time, and during a time where we looked for support and could not get the support. We actually went to the city of Manchester because there was what? The New Hampshire Symphony. Most people believe that since they had the name New Hampshire Symphony, that they were the symphony for the state of New Hampshire. In very private negotiations, a few of us would get together and meet and try and get a merger of the two organizations. That's much trouble we were in. We finally came to the end of the discussions with New Hampshire Symphony saying, we don't need you. We all know what happened. For people like Nancy, who was ahead, and Eric, who worked for very little and in a timeless fashion, we survived, and they did not. I caution on a couple things here. We've been part of many committees looking for the performing arts. Trust me, you think that the Performing Arts Center we have, where the symphony performs, is a good place? I'm sorry, even for a period of time, we tried to get some air conditioning there approved, couldn't even get the money at first. It's not an ideal situation. We'd love to have a place in Nashua, but I think it's important, what Barbara Presley said, for the second part. And that part is, is that, and I don't know the exact numbers, but a vote was taken, how many votes actually were voted in that for if they want a performing arts center or not? It was very little, right? How many votes?
About half percent.
How many total votes?
8,000.
How much?
8,000 or 9,000.
And what was the vote count? How much was it? It's a simple majority, right? What Barbara Presley has said is very important here. The people who are for, we want an arts center, we want a performing center, but they voted because they were told also during all these discussions that this was going to be done with private money. That's a very important distinction here. And now we've been given all these great assurances by these professionals, and believe me, we've been doing professionals for a number of years, raising money for churches, raising money for other things. It's not that easy. And they've given us these assurances or guarantees, as we heard the words, that, boy, this is going to be an easy one to do. I think the people need to, and I think Barbara Presley is correct here, need to know what they asked the city to do where we are now. I have been watching all along, waiting and asking questions, when's this going to happen? When's this going to happen? And we had nothing planned ahead of time. It was shooting from the hip again. And that's now caused us a problem. And I think that's the problem people have with government at this point, is that we throw something out, they've given us a direction, and it's tough to do. It's not easy. You don't have an easy job. It would be so much easier with the communication if we said, this is what our intent was going to be, that that's the route we're going to go down. These tax credits, you know, I agree, the tax credits, that, that's not private contributions, sorry. It's not at all private contributions. And I think if nothing else, we need to go to the people and say, here's what's happened. I mean, look at the, how many people we have here tonight? It's not very many people. And coming a week after a holiday week, we need to go to the people and say, this is the direction we're going to go in, in simple, plain English. Explain what the tax credits are, what they're all about, and the private contributions and what we need to do. And then, if you get that occurrence of the people, like Barbara Presley speaking, then we're on solid ground. It's not going to be three, four years from now, or five years from now, we're still trying to build this arts center that's downtown. My understanding, I don't think this complex can hold the full orchestra. Is that correct? Tim?
Yes, that's correct.
In this facility. It would be nice if we had a nice facility to do that. We can't do that. Tough decision. Barbara Presley has had some great comments. People need to know, we want the center, but we should know exactly who has the liability, who's going to have the liability. I will tell you, for example, for the symphony in New Hampshire, we're trying to raise money to keep things going. It is very, very tough. Believe me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Please come up to the microphone. Oh, Mr. Cummings?
I just had a quick question. It sounded like there was a group being represented in the comments there. I'd like to know which, which group it was.
I'm sure. I'm sure, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Deborah McLaughlin, 19 Salmon Brook Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. And in hearing all of this tonight, I'm thinking to myself, you know, I am your demographic who would attend these things and pay this ticket price and enjoy these festivities. And looking over the last, you know, 10 years, I have probably gone to 100 different venues, and I travel across the country, having gone to even 12 last year. However, I did vote no because my main concern was, one, not being aware if we really were going to be able to support this in sustainable funds without affecting our community. Second, also being concerned as to what philanthropy was going to be going towards it when we have, you know, children that don't have meals outside of the school program and other issues. So the other concern that, that came out was in regard to integrity. And the one thing I want to leave you with is, as each one of you is representing the people in your communities, as I recall, right before the voting occurred, all the headlines of The Telegraph talked about our large donor, our pending large donor. And I don't know about you, but if I'm paying, a lot of people will get in my car and go somewhere. So how, my question would be, you know, did the community really vote this in because they thought the funding was taking place and this would be a place of enjoyment without worry or concern as to how we were going to be funding this, if it was going to affect the philanthropy that was going to other nonprofits, whether it was going to eventually hit our tax dollars. So whether we're looking at a, you know, $10 million, $1 million bond or a 15, as you're looking at, you know, the design and every effort, to have that question in your back of your mind, was this voted in in integrity with full awareness of our community? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to be heard in opposition?
Thank you. Barbara Presley, again, 11 Orchard Avenue. I don't know if this is true or not, but at least in my memory, if you do vote for this tonight, you will basically be overriding the citizen's vote. And please think about that. Because what that means in the future, anytime the citizens vote an issue up or down, people can say, oh, don't worry about that, we can change it later if we want to. So please consider. My, my concern is the truthfulness and the integrity and the perception of can we trust our Board of Aldermen? So please think about it and see if you can't find another way to work on this project and take advantage of all that you have learned, but not violate the vote that was taken. Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to be heard in opposition? Seeing no one, I will call the public hearing close and ask for motion. Aldman, Wilshire?
Move to adjourn.
Motion on the floor is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. We're adjourned at 8:24 PM.
[inaudible]
Okay, I'd like to call the Budget Review Committee to order. It's November 26, 2018. We're in the automatic chamber. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Yes. Alderman at large, Laurie Wilshire?
Here.
Alderman Tom Lopez?
Here.
Alderman at large, Michael Brian, the clerk, is present. Alderman at large, Roshana Kelly?
Here.
Alderman at large, David Tenza?
Present.
Alderman Jan Smith is absent. Mr. Chairman is also present.
Thank you.
Also in attendance is Alderman Melissa Goja, Alderman Jettie, Alderman Karen, Alderman Loz, Alderman Clay, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Gidge. Also in attendance, Mr. Chairman is Mayor Donches and Director Tim Cummings and Mr. Fedet.
Thank you. This evening, we only have one item on the agenda. It's R 18092, which is amending R 18001, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $15,500,000 for the Performing Arts Center located at 201 Main Street. I'm now going to open it up for public comment, but since, please try not to repeat what was already said in the public hearing, as everyone here has heard it.
Fred Tebow, 24 Cheyenne Drive. Two things I want to say. First of all, the only thing that's really important tonight, out of the three proposals in this amendment, is the $1 million. $1 million for design should happen. I certainly understand, needs to be there to show donors what they're going to donate for. Called marquess or whatever you want to call it. That $1 million can be obtained through another resolution. You do not have to change this resolution adopted by the voters. You can simply have another resolution, pull the money of $1 million from another source. City's got plenty of money. Plenty of money lying around. I know that from personal experience. Get the million and get it from some other source and pass a resolution separately. The other thing I want to mention is tax credits. I asked him to give me a copy of his write-up. In the back of it says Basics of Tax Credit Finance. A tax credit is a dollar-for-dollar reduction of a taxpayer's tax liability. Right there, you see? It's done for socioeconomic reasons, to develop things that otherwise could not be developed, to be socially, economically acceptable. So, it is not a private fund.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to do public comment? Seeing none? Let's see. Communications?
There are none.
Unfinished business?
There is none.
New business resolutions?
Mr. Chairman, before us this evening is R 18092, amending R 18001, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $15,500,000 for the Performing Arts Center located at 201 Main Street. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to recommend final passage.
Motion's been made to recommend the full board final passage of R 18092. I will now open it up for discussion from the members of the board. Alderman Melissa Goja?
Yes, Alderman Dowd. Just for people who may not have this in front of them, could you please list what the change is, how we are amending it, what's being deleted and what's being added?
Okay. So, Mayor, would you like to articulate?
And just, I mean, I think just the plain language that's here.
Do you want me to answer that question?
Yes.
Well, if you're looking just for the language, the words, and for the design of new performing arts center, and the words, "including new market tax credits" are being added, and the words, "a portion of the operating costs" are being deleted.
Okay, thank you. Just so people who are listening have a sense of what there is.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Yeah, well, and I just have one other thing. During our break, I wasn't able to pull up the ballot from the election, but I spoke with the city clerk and she indicated that this was a non-binding referendum. And so, I think that we just need to state that, that it was not a referendum, it was a non-binding referendum. And as I think back to when this was first voted on, there were people in the chamber who said yes, maybe a majority of those people who voted supported it, but we could still decide, it was just advisory. And so, again, just to share the information from the city clerk, this was non-binding.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Kelly? Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. I just wanted to address the idea of having a separate amendment. I was having a discussion in the break. And the way that it's worded, it seems that we wouldn't be able to because of the way it's worded, it would actually be in, they would be against each other in terms of, it says no borrowing, and it's not necessarily against the bond, it's just no borrowing whatsoever. So, we have to consider that.
I'm not sure how that wording, the only thing you could borrow against with that legislation is the bonding, because it didn't authorize any other type of action from the board or the city. Alderman Lopez?
I was looking at the sample ballot that was posted on NHPR, just because it was the quickest, easiest thing to look up from my phone. And it didn't explicitly state any planning money. It said, "Construction and renovation should not be, money should not be used for that." But it didn't actually say we couldn't hire an architect to make a whole bunch of plans about it. So, whether that's part of this resolution or not, and without, you know, Attorney Bolton here present to say, yeah, you could definitely do a separate one because it's not explicitly prohibited, I don't know. But I also looked at the ballot and I think the first resolution on it was, we are, will we allow Keno in the city? And then the second one was, should the Board of Aldermen vote on this? I mean, I read those as pretty clearly two different types of things. One of them is, what are we all going to do collectively? And the second one is, what should they be doing? So, with respect to the concern for the integrity of the board, I think the people who voted for it understood what we were voting for. And I think by and large, most of the people in the room with concerns about what the people who voted for it believe, voted against those people. So, I think we had a recommendation as to whether we should vote for it or not. We also had the election, which turned over a bunch of Aldermen and gave the new ones seemingly a charge to push forward for this. So, from that perspective, I don't think there's any real concern about whether this is misleading the public or surprising it, you know, based on the referendum. What I would be more concerned about is the trust of the public moving forward, because it has been nine months. It has been difficult to find out what benchmarks of progress have been made and what haven't. And this has by and large been explained as a strategy to fundraise by not showing anybody what our hand is. And I think, nine months ago, or nine months past, we really need to start showing our hand. And we need to start engaging the people who are concerned about this, because we are ultimately asking them now to pay for this part two. So, whether or not they were confused about it, or whether or not they're willing, they're still equal partners in this. So, I think focusing on greater transparency in the steering committee meetings and making sure that they are clearly labeled, so the public can find them and maybe even some of the Aldermen can find them, is essential. And listening to public feedback is also essential, because Mr. Tebow did bring up several concerns about the architectural layout and the thoroughness of the plans, and that should have been a dead giveaway, that if he's concerned about it, what's somebody who's going to donate a million dollars going to think? We really shouldn't have gone into this without really rushing the initial process. We should have been working on this from the ground, as soon as the resolution passed, knowing that the public comment was focusing in a certain area, so donors likely would have similar concerns. The climate we were under last year was, we were trying to pass the resolution to secure the funding before Alex sold the building to someone else. So, there was a time crunch and there was need for us to maybe make resolutions and ordinances that weren't as fully or thoroughly fleshed out as Mr. Tebow recommends. But we need to start being more thorough and more transparent, so that we don't continue to have a cloud hanging over a fundraising campaign that we really need to get this done. I mean, as Aldermen, I'm trying to find the middle ground that supports progress moving forward while being responsible to the voters, and we can't work against ourselves. We need to make sure that the public is a partner in this and knows what's going on moving forward.
Alderman? Oh, thank you. Michael Brian, and then Alderman Jettie.
Similar to what has already been stated, I take great comfort into the vote that we had that was brought up by the voter. If this was a type of government where we would have the town meeting and if we were going to sit down at the town meeting and made the proposal of whether we're going to put the addition onto the fire station, that would be a different venue and a different question. Then the people would come up and discuss what they want to do. But what the people do in our former government in the city of Nashville, from my understanding, is we ask the simple question, do you want us to go forward with an arts center? And by the simple majority, they said yes. And so, therefore, I respect and I will go by what the majority of the people in Nashville want with this. And I think the people were prudent when they made that discussion. In some of the testimony I heard tonight, well, you rushed into it, different things, maybe so. But in the beginning of this, when Duncan Hines came up with some of the numbers and some of the things, we were in our infancy here. This project is more well-managed than what we got into with previous boards with the Burke Street Building. We have discussed this, we have worked this out, we have checked the financing and made the adjustments, much as any other corporate entity would in coming up with this project. There's no citizen, in my mind, who can really say, we're not really doing our due diligence. We are really looking at this shit, taking it upside down, looking in the interior of it and coming up with the best product that we can do, buy what the taxpayers wanted, is again, the arts center. So, I agree with some of that. And the one thing that has not been mentioned, if this project fails, then what are we going to do with that structure? Now, we could probably sell it to a private entity or something like that, by encouraging our good people, Paul Sche is going to love me for saying this, but please come to the farmer's market. Go inside the building, take a peek-see on what it looks like. Maybe if we still had the old IGA or something like that, that would be a perfect place for that. But those days have gone by. And that building right now is architecturally too big, too big for whatever needs. It would probably need to be torn down or divided up into subdivision, and maybe it may be something we like and maybe we don't like. You know, maybe we need another Duncan Donuts, maybe we don't. I don't know. But the point is this, right now, if you look at real estate, they tell you location, location, location. Downtown is the location where people are going to go. And again, if we can take this building and turn it into an arts center, I think that's going to improve the location and lead into part of the puzzle and other things. And then let's also look as a board. We have a very old middle school that has an auditorium attached to it, that is on its, basically, some of it is on its last life. Wouldn't it be nice to prepare, to have something in line or something like that that could supplement if that venue ever should become in jeopardy, whether we decide whether to invest into that or not? So, again, I feel comfortable, I'm going to support this because I'm going to vote the way this, my, you know, as Ward Ald, well, Alderman at large, the majority of the city voted, is support for the arts center. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Jettie?
So, as you know, I'm not on the committee, so I'm just here to take the opportunity to express my views. And I don't, you know, I don't question anyone's on this board, anyone's interpretation of the vote that the citizens made. But I personally, I personally feel that it's very important to me to be, you know, fair and honest with myself and with the people who voted for it. And so, I look back at the minutes of the meetings when this proposal was initially voted on by the previous board and saw that it failed to get the necessary 10 votes. And during that discussion, I don't remember if it was before or after that vote, but the idea of putting in the $4 million as that would be raised from the private sector before this would go forward, was, you know, the resolution was amended to add that $4 million in there. And then it failed to get the 10 votes and by majority vote, it was decided to offer this to the voters. this to the voters. And it was the same resolution, but it was amended by adding at the beginning of the resolution, you know, should, or should the Board of Aldermen enact this following resolution, something to that effect. So it was put on the ballot and people voted on it. And during the discussion, it's reflected in the minutes, it was very clear that this would not go forward, that the $15.5 million would not be borrowed, not one penny would be borrowed unless the mayor certified that $4 million had been raised privately. And I remember, this was on the ballot, when I was on the ballot, and I remember people asking me about it. And I remember telling people that I personally thought that the Performing Arts Center was a good idea, but that the people had a chance to vote on it. And I promised the people that I talked to that I would follow the vote of my ward. And my ward voted against this. Not by a whole lot, but they voted against it. I think five out of the nine wards voted against it. But as a city as a whole, by a small majority, voted in favor of it. And that's what, when we, when it came to the new Board of Aldermen, we voted 14 to 1. I was the one vote against it, because, again, my ward voted against it. We voted to go forward with this. But during all of those discussions, it was clear that this was going to be a public-private partnership and that people could rely upon the fact that we would not go forward unless the $4 million was raised. And people have since told me that they voted for it with that understanding. And they've, you know, people have contacted me about this resolution, saying that they feel, you know, this is just a few people who have contacted me feel betrayed if this is passed, that they feel betrayed by this. And I'm not saying that if you vote for it, that you're betraying them, but that's how some people feel. And I personally cannot support this, because I think, you know, it's very important, my word is very important to me as a person, as a lawyer, as an Alderman. And I feel that adopting this, we are ignoring, you know, we asked the voters what they thought, and this is the resolution that they voted for, and the resolution contained that $4 million condition precedent. Now, you know, I've heard, it expressed that, you know, designing, you know, going ahead with a design is kind of very important. I don't disagree with that. But I would encourage us to find some other way of coming up with the necessary funds to design this thing, so that it can go forward without changing the resolution that was adopted by the voters and adopted by this board. You know, so I don't know how that could be accomplished. I don't know if the legal department can tell us whether we can do that legally, whether a separate resolution, a separate bond, or whether, as Mr. Tebowom suggested, the mayor could find money in the current budget to come up with the money for this design. Another alternative is, we're going to have a special election to vote, to elect a new Alderman at Large to replace Alderman McCarthy. So, you know, something could be put on that ballot. It's going to happen within, I don't know, several months. And we could again ask the voters whether or not they would, they would support this But I would, you know, if you adopt this and recommend final passage and it comes before the full board, I cannot support it the way it is.
Just to address a couple of things you just said, if we wait till a special election, it's pushing things out, at the minimum, we'd have to extend the amount of time we have to raise the money, number one. And number two, every time you push something out like that, costs go up. The other thing is, the $15.5 million authorized us to spend money to buy the building. You said it didn't authorize us to do anything. It did authorize us to buy the building at over $2 million. So part of that $15.5 million was used to buy the building. The, what's on the floor is a resolution, which is an amendment to a resolution. Numerous times over the number of years I've been on the board, we've had resolutions come through and they need to be amended. We find things out as we move along, and you have to do an amendment to make it right. In this case, to get the funding we need to go forward, to meet the requirements that the voters gave us, it needs a design. So authorizing some amount of money to do the design to move forward seems very prudent. We certainly won't finalize the money to do the middle school project till we have a design, a final design. But yet, we're spending money to get the design. So it's very similar. And as it was said, it's a non-binding resolution. We could have voted up, could have voted down, either way. And what was passed was a resolution before the Board of Aldermen, and we have the right to amend resolutions, as we've done numerous times. Alderman Lizzie Golia?
Could I just respond to?
Sure.
I don't think we borrowed, I don't think we used this $15.5 million bond to buy the building. That was a separate, my memory may be different than yours, my memory is that we did that separately, and the money came from the budget. We didn't use the $15.5 million bond to buy the building. It was a separate matter.
Treasurer for debt?
At least that's my memory. And you're absolutely right, the, what the voters voted was advisory. We are not bound by that legally. We have a right to do, to adopt this resolution. Whether it's right or not is a matter of opinion.
Just to clarify that, Treasurer for debt?
The bond resolution allowed us to use the proceeds of this bond to purchase the building, and that's what we used. It's right here on the bond.
Yeah.
No bond for the renovation or construction of a new performing arts center, except for costs related to acquiring and securing for safety and security purposes, the property anticipated to be used as a new performing arts center. So this authorized the city to purchase the building, this bond resolution.
Have you issued that $15.5 million bond?
No, but that's how it's, that's how it's going to, no, no.
$15.5 wasn't used to buy the building.
A bond resolution authorizes you to spend. You do not have to sell the bond at that instance. We don't sell bonds in that instance. We spend the money mostly first and then sell the bond. There was no other authorization for any other money to be used to purchase the building. It's the bond resolution that allows that.
And that's true on almost all bonding. Alderman Lizzie Golia?
Right. Well, and I guess that was going to be my point, that as Treasurer for Debt said, what the bond resolution authorized was no borrowing for renovation or construction of a new performing arts center, except for costs related to acquiring and securing the property anticipated for the performing arts center. What has been added is, and for the design of the new performing arts center. So my understanding is, we will spend that money from somewhere else in the city, and we will then pay ourselves back when the bond is let. That has always been my understanding of basically what's happening. Where did the money come from to purchase?
It comes from the city's cash flow, but it's authorized through the resolution.
Right. So where would the money come from for design? Would it also come as authorized through the resolution from city cash flow?
Yes.
And then, once we're at a position that the mayor says, "Okay, you've raised at least a total of $4 million," the mayor can then authorize the bond to be let, to be sold?
That's the way the resolution reads, yes.
All right. So this bond, if this amendment is approved tonight, it is not going to trigger the bond being sold. This is just saying, money can be borrowed for design, and we still have to get to the $4 million before the bond can be sold, a minimum of $4 million.
Yes, that's, I believe that's the way it still reads, yes.
I mean, nothing else has been changed, it's just, all we've added is that borrowing can occur for the design of the new performing arts center. The mayor's determined that private funds, including new market tax credits, can be included in the $4 million, and that they will be used towards, and we removed a portion of the operating costs and just left, a new performing arts center have been raised.
Okay, before we go any further, the mayor would like to speak.
Just this technical point of where the money comes from. The city has a very strong cash position and cash flow. So there is sufficient funds to advance against an authorized expenditure, an authorized bond. That is really always the way it's done, you know? If you're going to spend a million dollars, you only sell bonds once a year, so in anticipation of that sale, the city advances cash. But if it weren't for the bond resolution, we would have an unauthorized expenditure and we would have a deficit.
Right.
At the end of the day. Because you have not authorized but for the bond, there's no budget item, $2 million. This is bonded money that, this is going to be bonded money, it's authorized. The accountants, the financial advisors, all expect that this is going to be paid out of bond proceeds, and that's the ultimate source of the funds. So it's not like we have this pool of money, we can just spend it the way we want. You know, if we did not ever sell these bonds, we would have a deficit at the end of the year.
I was wrong. I've looked at the resolution authorizing the purchase was R-18-002. And it says, "The purchase price shall be $2 million to be paid from bond proceeds authorized by R-18-001." So I was wrong, it was part of that.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Tenza?
Thank you.
And then Alderman Lopez?
Thank you. So, I mean, I appreciate the comments from the public and the comments from Alderman Jettie about finding another source of money for this $1 million to fund the design of the Performing Arts Center. But to me, that would be a greater breach of the public trust, based on the referendum that was voted on last year, since I think what most people knew they were voting on was that there was going to be a cap of $15.5 million that would be bonded, and that $4 million would be raised. If we're going to go back and then tell people, "Well, we want an additional $1 million above the $15.5 million," I think people are going to have a real hard time with that, which is why I would not support any sort of amendment to either pay for it out of city funds, which I don't believe that we would have at this point, or to float another bond with, in order to pay for that. I think what the city's asking for here is just some flexibility within the $15, excuse me, .5 million. And I think that, given, as Alderman Lizzie Golia said before, that this process is different maybe than how private entities are able to fundraise and go through a different process, I think it's reasonable, it's not going to cost the city taxpayers any more money than what we've already committed to under the original bond. And I think it just makes sense at this point, moving forward with this project. Now, the other part of the amendment that the city's asking for, the mayor's asking for, is to allow new market tax credits to be counted towards this $4 million fund that we're going to raise. Quite frankly, I don't think that we have to include this, because I think new market tax credits are not, it's not city money that we're putting into this. It is private money. It's no different than a charitable donation that people are giving to get a tax benefit. It's not money that's coming from the city coffers, or state coffers, or federal coffers. These are private corporations that are going to be willing to donate to the project and receive this benefit, you know, this benefit in exchange for their donation. So I'm not even sure that needed to be included in there. I'm glad that it is spelled out, because I think it allows us to have a conversation about these new market tax credits, what they are, what they mean. But clearly, I don't agree with the people, the folks who have said that this is not private sector money, because it is. It's not money that the city is advancing in order to fund this art center. So I think this is reasonable. I understand folks are concerned about this whole, about this whole process, and I think that the city is hearing their concerns, and there has been a lot more information about it. And I hope, as Alderman Lopez pointed out before, that we continue to provide information so people are more comfortable with this as it moves along.
Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, so I think maybe this is making it more clear why I had some reservations, but I'm ultimately moving forward with support for it, because at this point, we, if we don't do what is necessary to ensure that the project has the best chance for success, we're going to lose the investment we've already put into it, and that's going to hurt the taxpayers. So I have my reservations about how the project is being run. I have nothing very subtle or secret about them. I think maybe Director Cummings is deduced. I have some skepticism. But I don't want to be right. I want the project to succeed in the way that is best for my voters. I want to make sure that the money that we put in to buy Alex, and as important as the money, the investment of confidence that people came out in droves to say, "I'm keeping my business on Main Street. I believe in our city, I believe in you, I want you to vote for this." I feel like we need to recognize that as much as we recognize the skepticism and concern. We need to be listening to the people who are troubleshooting the methodology that's going on and pointing out areas of weakness, because that's how we make a stronger program. We also need to be listening to the people who really made it clear that they want to see Nashville be progressive, build the Performing Arts Center, not just because they're in love with the performing arts and that kind of stuff, but because they recognize the need for an economic center downtown, and they recognize that downtown is, and Nashville in particular, is a very vital and unique place. And if we don't continue to invest in it and develop it and build on the energy that we have, we're going to lose it. So I don't want to see the Performing Arts Center fail any more than Mr. Tebowom does. I think the criticism and the skepticism that you've heard in public comment needs to be harnessed as troubleshooting, and we need to be looking at the issues with our process. When push comes to shove, though, we also have to do our jobs as elected officials, read the ordinances, interpret it, and vote, because that's what we were elected to do.
Alderman Karen?
Yes, thank you. I'm a little concerned about this. I have no problem with the $1 million for the design work, if this helps you get the tax credit. But in 2017, when we first voted for this, and it was voted down, and then Alderman Siegel, former Alderman Siegel and I were having a conversation, and he suggested that in order to make this work, as we hear from other groups, from other towns, that this has to be a private-public entity. It's not going to work on its own. So the idea was to come up with an amount of money that the private sector had to bring forward in order for us to move forward after purchasing this building. forward in order for us to move forward after purchasing this building. Now, all of a sudden, this new resolution is coming in that we can do this, but tax credits. We had talked about that before, that these tax credits, maybe you consider them private, but we were looking at that to reduce the bond rate, not to reduce the bond debt, not to make it part of that $4 million. And that is my biggest concern. We are a public entity, so we don't hear about this money, and I agree with Alderman Lopez. We are in the dark a lot about what is going on. And I don't feel any animosity that Mr. Cummings isn't doing what he's supposed to do. I think he is. He's trying to work at this. But we, as a public, and the people in this community, need to know what's happening. Yeah, you don't, trust me, you don't care about the $10 people?
They care.
But, right, they care. And the other thing is, that where are we? It's been a year, and we don't have any clue as to what we've collected. I don't care if you got $510. I don't, how much money do we have? Do we have $100,000? That gives the incentive for someone, not me, giving you $1 million for the naming rights. But, the people I spoke to, my one, they didn't agree to it. I said, "I voted for this in anticipating that we would get $4 million." And you're right, there were people sitting here, constantly saying that they would be part of this, this was important for us, and I agree, we wanna make our downtown viable and for people to come to. But where are they? What have they done since we approved this? This is what bothers me. In a private entity, if you were fundraising for the soup kitchen, yeah, they're looking at their campaign in a different avenue than we are as a public, because they're talking to donors that are going to contribute to that particular cause. And they probably don't want their name out. But we, as the public, and as the Board of Aldermen, need to know where we stand. And I was here in 1994 when we talked about Court Street. And when that private money died, Court Street died. And how sad for us, because it was going so well. So, I don't want this to happen, so that the city has to pick it up, because we can't. The city can't afford to. That's why you're looking to hire a management company that deals in this kind of thing, to make it the best it can be. You know, we bought Pennecheck, but Pennecheck is not a department. Pennecheck is an entity on its own, and it does very well. It reports to us, and that's what this should be. And for me, I have no problem changing this, so you have that money for your design work, and maybe we are doing it a little backwards, but that's okay. But I will not support the fact that we are using tax credits as part of this $4 million private entity that was supposed to be. I just can't, and I will not let the people in Ward Seven, who voted against this, that I let them down, because that's, I voted for that in the first place because of it. Otherwise, I never would have voted for this project to move forward, until you had that all put together. And I have listened to both sides, and I compromise when I can, but for this, I just, in my heart of hearts, I don't think we're doing the right by this community, by not saying that the private entity has to give us, put $4 million in the bank, so that we have that cushion to move forward down the road. Thank you.
Alderman Clea?
Hi, thank you. I think I'm probably one of the few Aldermen that have gone to every one of the meetings. So, and yes, Director Cummings will tell you, I nagged constantly. I would say to him, "We have to talk to the public about this. We have to let them know. We have to make them understand." So, I was very much nagging, and I'd say to him, "I'm getting phone calls. I'm doing this." And because this, every committee is community-based, as well as city-based, so, you know, public and private, they didn't understand. They know how something runs on a private. So, for instance, like the soup kitchen, they went two years where no one even knew that money was being raised. The problem is that we have to keep this, and I don't think we have been completely transparent. Truthfully, I don't know exactly how much money is sitting in City Arts that has been raised. And please don't anybody think that that $10 donation doesn't mean an immense thing to everybody within these groups, because it does. We talk about it constantly. We talk about the need for that, and I always call it grassroots. I don't call it little donations. I don't call it the $10 donations. I call it the grassroots donations. They are important. But like what was said before, and I've spoken to a lot of people, because I was one of the first people that said, "Let's go get everybody to donate at once, so that we know we have that $4 million." The truth is, what everybody has said, and I've talked to a lot of people on this, not just here in Nashville, not just here in this group, that if we do, in fact, put it out there, and we have fundraisers, and we have this, you're gonna get, some people who might have donated $100,000, will donate $10,000, and then walk away and say, "I made a donation." They may do it anonymously, they may do it with their name on it. We don't know. I will also tell you that, working with the campaign group and so on, and these people who are funding, many of them don't want it. They don't want their name out there. It's not that they're ashamed that they're attached to this, it's more that this is the way that they do it. This is their philanthropy. And I've talked to those people and said, "What about donating to children's organizations and so on?" And what I'm learning is that there are groups of people that donate to the arts, there are groups of people who donate to other philanthropy types of groups, like children's and so on. These groups don't always mix. Some do. I give to all of them. So, as little as I can give, I do. I give to all of them. The bottom line is, I think we need this $1 million. I was lucky enough to have one of the wards that did very eagerly pass. And I know it keeps getting brought up, that it was only 1.5% of the voters. Well, sadly, we don't get a lot of voters that come out. And a lot of times, people don't vote, because they don't understand what a resolution does and so on. So, I don't wanna say that, you know, it only won by 100 and whatever it was, and that's not significant enough. The voters have spoken. The voters spoke for something that we're changing now. It was non-binding. There wasn't one door that I talked to, that I didn't say that this was a non-bonding, I'm sorry, non-binding referendum, and that it would depend on the vote here. I'm going to support this. I don't get to vote in this group here, because I'm not part of this committee, but I am supporting it. I think if we don't do this $1 million, then we basically, might as well just sell the building, because we're not going to get it. The fundraising has started, as far as the group of people that are getting together, and it is, I don't wanna say it's just Nashville-based, but it's not a professional fundraiser that's doing the door-knocking. It's the people that are putting in their own money, and then they're going and knocking on doors of friends, and colleagues, and so on. And yes, it's a quiet group. We don't put out who it is that's donating. We don't put out who is knocking on doors, maybe because their friends will stop answering the phones, I don't know. But, the bottom line is that we need this $1 million. I can't say it enough. I'm sorry that this didn't come up at the very beginning. I would have loved to, that we knew enough to put it through there. I don't wanna say that we misrepresented it, because most of this board did not put the ballot down. And yeah, maybe it would have been nice if we had the amendment right from the beginning. Personally, I didn't realize that the design was not part of the thing, and that's my fault, and I take responsibility for that, but I do think, we might as well just kill the project if we don't do the $1 million. No one, there's not a bank that would give a loan to a construction site unless they had a design plan in place, and that's how these big donors feel. And, no, I don't believe that a large company will put, spend a million dollars to put their name on a building, if they think it's going to be a folly. They're gonna wanna see that design. So, thank you.
The mayor would like to speak.
All right, just briefly, because I know we've been here a while. First of all, I think we discussed the new market tax credits as we were going into the vote. At least, people were talking about that. We never realized we could get $4 million out of it. Number two, I think we're losing track, to some degree, of the fact that, if they're right, we bring in six and a half. You really think the public would say, "Oh, you said four, but now you've brought in six and a half," or six, or even five? So we don't like that. We'd rather you just bring in four, and so, we're gonna reject the project, because you brought in six and a half. But we don't, it's not city money, but we don't like exactly how you did it, even though you came up with two or two and a half million more than we thought. I just think, the public asked us, in essence, to manage this project and bring it to a conclusion successfully. And if we were saying, "Oh, we can't come up with four, we can come up with 1 million," you know, I could, I see a problem. But we're saying, or our experts are telling us, and it seems all very promising, we're gonna, we can do six and a half, which is way more than four. So, I don't, I mean, I think we are improving the project in the public's mind, not reducing its attractiveness, by saying that we can come up with more money than we thought. But we do need to design the project to make that possible.
Director Cummings, did you wanna say something?
I do, yes.
Okay, and then I'll, and then I'll speak.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and the body. I wanted to just take a quick moment and say, I've heard the comments, particularly Alderman Lopez. I will recommit to you to be as transparent as possible, to make sure that everyone has all the information that they need. I try to be accessible. I mean, everyone here has my cell phone number and my work line, and I'm always available for questions. And I'm happy to do whatever I can to make it more transparent for a process. There is a Facebook page for this project, that people can go to find out updates. All the meetings are open, and publicly noticed. I will do whatever I can to make sure that we get the word and the message out. I will say that I have 14 members of this body, and 15, if you count the mayor, and then a couple very strong consultants, all giving me differing opinions, and I'm trying to facilitate the process as best I can, and I am trying to make all of you happy by trying to accommodate all your wishes. Sometimes I fall short on that, and I apologize, but I'm doing the best that I can, and I will do whatever I can to continue to make it as transparent as possible.
Alderman Malizzi-Golia?
Yes, a couple of things about the new market tax credits. Very, very early on, and this was in the feasibility study phase, there was conversation about using new market tax credits to reduce the amount of the bond. So Alderman Karen is correct in stating that. We were supposed to have a meeting with Neil Cannon, and that has been canceled. And I am wondering if, since this piece of legislation is not on the agenda for tomorrow night's Board of Aldermen's meeting, if, in the next couple of weeks, or maybe at the next PAC meeting, because that's what we had talked about, if we could have a meeting with Mr. Cannon to do a presentation about new market tax credits, and maybe give everyone an opportunity to ask their questions and have them answered. And if you look back at the minutes from the last special Board of Aldermen's meeting we had when we discussed this, that was supposed to happen, and that was scheduled for November 8th, but then it was canceled. So if we could make that happen, I think that would be helpful. Sorry to put one more thing on you, Director Cummings.
You wanna respond?
Yes, I absolutely agree, and I will do the best I can to try to get that scheduled as quickly as possible. Probably a mid-December type of timeframe is what we would be looking for, for that meeting. I just wanna be clear, though, and this hasn't come up, but I wanna get it out in advance, I don't want that to be in lieu of this body, moving forward with this resolution, because everything is predicated on top of this. And so we have applications pending before differing foundations and whatnot, and we need to represent a clear project to them, and this, every time we wait, there is a delay.
And I guess that was my question about whether or not this was on tomorrow night's agenda. And if I have a meeting scheduled, and you can use that time, I will cancel whatever meeting I have. So you can use that time. And then, my other question is, we've all, we all know that the legislation is written for $4 million. So say we get 6.5, or we get seven in private donations, and Treasurer Fede, this is, I guess, a question for you. If we decide, maybe the endowment, we wanna keep 5 million in there, and we have an extra 1.5, can then, that then be put towards the bond? Or, once it's in the endowment, is it in the endowment?
It's in the endowment.
It's in the endowment.
Mr. Cummings?
So just, I know this is directed to Treasurer Fede, but this has been a conversation that's come up and through the process, and, once it's in the endowment, it can't come out of it, but the trick is, is to make sure it doesn't go into the endowment in the first place.
Okay, so, once we say, hit 5 million in the endowment, then can we redirect any additional new market tax credit funds towards paying off the bond?
So the simple answer is yes, but I wouldn't use the term "endowment." So say, there's a separate holding account.
Count, okay.
That all this money goes into, and then, some of the money will go into an endowment fund, some of the money will then go into project costs, some of the money will go into paying off the debt, or maybe never being borrowed in the first place.
Okay, all right, okay. And then, just for people who are watching, people keep speaking about a million to be used for the design, but I have not seen a million specified in this resolution. Is that correct? I mean, I just, it keeps being referred to as if it's carved in stone in this resolution, but there is nothing in this resolution that says up to 1 million for design, correct?
That is correct. It is built into the overall 15 and a half figure.
Right, okay. So it could be less?
It could be less.
Okay, all right. It's just the way it's been talked about. Thank you very much.
Alderman Karen?
Concerning Alderman Clea's concern about the design costs, I don't have any problem with that, and you're right, it probably should have been part of that. But the $4 million, and, I'm sorry, but, the new tax credit wasn't part of that, and I wouldn't call it an endowment. That money was to show that the public was committed to this project, and that whatever money we got, whether it was 4 million or 10 million, that would help sustain the Performing Arts Center, to help with whatever, the building maintenance, staff, whatever we needed, so that they didn't come to the city and were looking for us to take care of that. And that's why we came up with the $4 million. I don't care whether you, you know, if you only raised 2.5 million, or 3.5 million, and you wanna move forward, I don't see anyone saying anything. But the new tax credit isn't a given, number one, and it isn't a constant. That's why you want the private sector to be giving you this money. And I don't care who's coming out to give whatever. I wanna know where we stand. Are we close to $1 million? Are we close to that? That's what the public wants to know. I don't, I don't think they care whether Joe Blow down the street is giving a dollar or $50,000. It's, that's important, and for me, that's, as former Alderman Presley said, that's your integrity, because I voted for that legislation in the first place, because of that $4 million need from the private sector. And if that's not gonna be part of that anymore... going to be part of that anymore, and you're changing it, for me, that's a no vote. Period. End of story. So maybe what you need to do is put it in so that you can do the design work, and take this thing out and hold it until after Neil comes and speaks to us about these tax credits and whatever else for that money. But that, you're not going to change my mind that that private money is not important to this project as a whole, and for it to move forward down the road, when all of us are no longer sitting in this chamber.
Mr. Cummings?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So just a couple of comments. So one, I guess it's how you define the term quote unquote "private" and quote unquote "public." And so, all along, the idea was that new market tax credits would be used for this project. We didn't know exactly how much. We didn't know how the split would be in terms of going to what source. I mean, at the end of the day, I look at it as the money is fungible. But the, the requirement of having $4 million be raised by the private sector is still in this resolution. And I believe there will be an endowment fund set aside for this project. I do not believe it will be anywhere near the $4 million figure. Why is that? Because we have a third-party entity that is now saying that they will run this operation, and they do not have an interest in having any party to an endowment fund. They don't think it's necessary or wise. So therefore, they're suggesting that we don't necessarily capitalize a $4 million endowment fund. And so, should we have something in, as a reserve? Yes, I would recommend that. And I think that that would be prudent. How did we get to that $4 million figure? If you recall, the original concept plan called for a nonprofit to operate this facility. And they were going to operate it at approximately an $1 million operational budget. We knew that we would have earned income of about $700,000. You knew that you'd have to have some sort of contributed income of around $300,000. The conversation very early on during the working group stages of this feasibility study, it became abundantly clear that the city of Nashua didn't have an interest in supporting the Performing Arts Center on an ongoing basis operationally. So the charge was given, that we should try to figure out a way to soften that $300,000 gap. The idea that was suggested was capitalize an endowment fund. And if you can capitalize the endowment fund, and this was all recommended to us by our consultant, you would essentially kick off about $150-ish, $160,000 in earned income, I'm sorry, contributed income through one source. And then the nonprofit would have to go out and still fundraise an approximately $100,000 to $150,000 every year to make that approximate $1 million operational budget. Fast forward two years to where we are today. We don't necessarily need to do that any longer. So if we have the ability to put that money towards differing uses in this project, or potentially not bond as much, I would recommend to you, and that's what my memo outlines, that this is a better course of action for the city of Nashua. So that's why I was urging that this amendment be put forward.
President Wiltshire?
Thank you. There's nobody in this horseshoe that wants to see this project fail. We all want this to be successful. I believe everyone in the audience even wants this to be successful. We're not asking for, you know, 10 million more, or 10 million less. We're just asking in this resolution for some flexibility in how that money's going to be used. That's it. It's really that simple. You know, I don't think it's a matter of integrity. I don't think it's a matter of, you know, I think it's just, we need a little flexibility to make this happen. That's all this is. That's all we're asking. I'm going to support this. I urge all of you to support this. There's nothing here that, in this resolution, that says we're not going to raise $4 million from the private sector. But we still have that plan to do that. Just need some flexibility. These are things that weren't foreseen at the beginning, when the voters approved this. It just didn't happen upfront. It's happening now. We need the flexibility. Let's move this on.
Alderman Lopez?
I just want to comment. Earlier, the question was asked, where are they now in reference to people coming out and supporting Performing Arts Center? They're still here, and I'm hearing from them every day. Because I represent the ward where a lot of them are located. There is still a lot of passion for this project. And the comments that I made in terms of skepticism or cynicism towards the process was because I feel like this is an underutilized resource. So that doesn't mean it's missing, or absent, or that people are still not very passionate. There are businesses running downtown right now because we are moving forward with Performing Arts Center, which is one of the biggest acts of faith I can imagine. So they're here. I was unhappy with not making an easy vehicle for them to donate. Because one of the most common feedbacks that I've been getting this past year is, how do I donate? Why, why isn't there just like a big jar of money somewhere? And obviously, the consultants and the experts have been saying, because you're never going to raise enough money that way if you, if you do it that way. So that's where we are, and that's what's going on. But it's not necessarily because there isn't interest in the part of the people who supported this in the public. They are still there. And they are more than ready for the grassroots component to kick off. I would say chomping at the bit is a better term.
Alderman, Alderman McGee?
Thank you. I have a question and a point of clarification. So question is perhaps to Director Cummings. But my question is, if we were planning on using the new market tax credits all along, then why are we amending this if we were already considering that?
Mr. Cummings?
Thank you. So, in an effort to be more transparent, we want to make it explicit as to one of the sources of funds that we would be using. And so you, we would force this conversation that we're having here tonight. We have already had conversations about differing ways or alternative sources of non-city money being used. Another one is CDFA, Community Development Finance Authority's tax credit. And that, that is not explicit in this, but it is wholly appropriate and deemed acceptable as yet another source of funds. And there will be many. There will be foundations giving money, as well as individuals, as well as corporate entities. We wanted to just make it explicit that new market tax credit money is going to be one of the sources that would be, that would be used.
Thank you. So my second piece, if I could follow on, was just this idea of confidence. I know it's come up from a lot of different people. How much money do we have in the bank? Are the people who were in the, you know, in this room, when I was till midnight, the first run, stepping up to give money? And I will tell you, I had similar concerns, and I wanted to know what was going on. And I sat down with people who have run capital campaigns. And I sat down with a number of them. And throughout our conversation, it was made very clear to me that the two years is a short amount of time to be doing what we're doing. And the way that we're doing it for in the public eye is, is very different than most. So, you know, Trish Curly brought up that the soup kitchen did this, and it was all very quiet, two-year kind of process. So I think I felt more comfortable knowing that this is very similar to the way a capital campaign would go. Except for now, we have the public really interested and excited and passionate, and that's great. But those long-term goals of big donors take time. And so I think, I feel confident, because the people who have done this for a very long time, I'm not a professional fundraiser, I don't think anyone on this board is, are telling me that this is an appropriate timeline and an appropriate expectation.
Just one thing before we go on. You know, I'm thinking about the tax credits. And if a person donates to a nonprofit, and they write that off on their taxes, so they're not paying as much money in taxes, and then they can donate that if they want to another charity, to me, that's personal funds. Businesses have the option on, in this, in these credits of not paying money in and not knowing where that money's going, but rather allocating it to something here in town. And I think a lot of the companies are looking to do that. And that could go a long way to the success of this project. And as someone always told me, if you're going to do a project, you should do it right. Alderman Lozzi-Gholyer?
Yes. Just a question for Director Cummings. In one of our earlier conversations, and I don't remember if it's, if it was when Ms. McNamara was there, or if it was our September meeting, when we first started talking about this, there was a comment that either for the tax credits, but I thought it was for the CDFA funding, we needed to have a 501(c)(3). Is that true? And can the city serve as that 501(c)(3) or City Arts Nashua?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, it depends on the tax credits. So, CDFA, I believe the city could act as it. For the new market tax credit, I believe it would be a 501(c)(3).
So City Arts Nashua?
So City Arts Nashua.
Okay, great. So we don't, because I know very early on, we had talked about the endowment being necessary. But it looks like that's kind of gone away, because we have two entities that could serve that purpose. Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the resolution? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to recommend to the full board approving the amendment to R1801, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $15,500,000 for the Performing Arts Center located at 201 Main Street. Only members of the committee may vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So it will be recommended to the full board for final passage. New business ordinances?
There is none.
General discussion? Seeing none. Any additional public comment? Seeing none. Remarks by Alderman? Thank you all for coming out this evening. Very interesting subject and well debated. Thank you. We have no need for non-public. Do I hear a motion, Alderman Wiltshire? Motion is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 9:42.